Talk about stressful.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault for, I don't know what I, if I hit something or what. Okay, let's see if we go live. And then we can start a little late and I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, I believe, I believe we are live.
All right. To order the virtual city council meeting for April 27th, 2020. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones? Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Farrell?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
And Mayor Riggle?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Michael Curtis from Second Baptist Church.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray, Lord God, we thank you for just another opportunity to come together as a group and as a family. Father, we thank you for this day that you have allowed us to see that was not promised to us. We pray now that you give us wisdom to make the right decision, Lord. We pray for peace among, not only in Delaware, but everywhere. And we ask, Lord, for patience. That we would be patient with one another and wait until things come to fruition. Bless us now, each and every one, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Curtis.
You are welcome.
Before we begin, I'd like to make a few comments. We know a lot of our residents have questions about the city reopening, as we did too. There are a few areas that we're focusing on when it comes to opening back up, such as our businesses, our fiscal, our community outreach, our human resources, and our health and safety. We heard some answers today from Governor DeWine, which will help us, but there's still a lot of questions that remain. When do we reopen a business? We want our favorite shops, salons, restaurants to be open as much as you do, but it's not going to hap, it's going to happen in phases, just as the governor said. I'm very proud of what we have been able to do. Daily points of contact between our team and the business community. Reserve parking areas downtown for order pickups for curbside at the restaurants. A survey for local businesses on issues, needs, concerns, now and going forward. Access to communication updates on loan and employment programs. Will there be large events in Delaware in 2020? Until we all are, have safe, can safely gather in large numbers, more than 10, as he spoke again today, we do not want to promote public gatherings that could pose high risks. Unfortunately, many events have already been canceled, such as the Arts Festival, the Car Show, St. Mary's Festival. The Veterans, the Veterans Parade has been canceled, but we have another idea and I'll get back with you later on that. And there'll probably be many more that are canceled between now and then. What does that mean for the Fourth of July? We will, we will take lead from our state and we will focus on the directive of our public gatherings. I hope we can give you some updates on July 4th in the next couple of weeks. Ironman, same goes on for Ironman, late in July. We have all been, we have been talking to the Ironman and we are very mindful of the nearby towns and townships that helped us put on this event. So we'd have to get input for all of them. I've had several calls on the All Horse Parade and Little Brown Jug. Again, it's too early to know what's going to happen in our fall season and what it'll look like. What about the summer outdoors? Florence Pool, we may have some kind of a shortened school pool season. It's also a possibility the pool may not open at all this summer. Again, nothing to announce tonight, but I want everyone to know that we are working on this with the YMCA and the Health Department. As far as our parks, we have walking paths we are, that are open and we've opened a new area behind the dog park off of Mill Creek, Mill Run Crossing. The tennis court, pickleball courts, basketball courts, play toys, playgrounds, all of our parks are closed. The State Park is closed, the Dog Park is closed, the Hidden Golf Course is closed. We want to reopen just as soon as possible, but working with the state on these guidelines. On the relief for our utilities, many of our citizens are unemployed due to the COVID-19 pandemic and City Council has provided some relief. City customers who are unable to work due to COVID-19 pandemic can qualify for a utility assistance program. The due date for the utility bill has been pushed back from the 15th of the month to the 30th of the month. Water disconnections and late fills have all been suspended. As far as income tax, our filing date for the income tax returns is July 15th. And this is a great time for us to use the electronic e-file tax tool. The tax date for any taxes due or owed to the city for 2019 has been extended to July 15th also. As far as yard waste, this is probably the most phone calls I've had. This service requires a team of three, riding and working together. Due to social distancing regulations, this cannot happen. There's a lot of interest in when seasonal yard waste will collect, collection can begin again, we know that. Usually it happens around April 15th, but it has been delayed. Our crews, our crews want to begin yard waste pickup as soon as they possibly can. And we hope to have news soon on that. We're waiting for masks, if you want to know the truth. In the meantime, city residents can take their yard waste to Price Farms Organic. As far as Blue Trotters, we are still picking up trash regularly. Our crews need to stay as healthy as possible to perform their jobs for all of us. On your collection day, we ask that you put all of your trash in your Blue Toter and make sure that the lid closes completely. That way they are not touching any of the bags and we don't worry, have to worry about contamination. Other options, make sure that you're recycling everything that you can to free up room in your, in your refuse bin. If you need another bin, just contact the city and we'll make sure you get one. As far as our police, they're still working three shifts, 24/7, and they continue to serve and protect our city, just as they always have. While the police station is closed to visitors, the lobby is open for police services. And our fire department continues to provide lifesaving help and response as they always have. So I hope that it helps to answer some of the questions, some of the calls that I've been getting. And with that, we will move on. Item three on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh my gosh, I am so sorry. The motion summary of the regular meeting of council held on April 13th, 2020, as recorded and transcribed.
Thank you. What's the wish of council?
I move for approval of the motion summary.
You seconded. Okay, I have a motion. Mrs. Keller is seconded by Mr. Farrell. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Item five on the agenda is letters, petitions, and public comments. Elaine, has anything been submitted?
I have not received any emails at this time. I don't see any public comment on Facebook.
Right. Okay, then we're going to move on to a proclamation. Tonight's proclamation.
Do you want to do the consent agenda?
Excuse me?
Do you want to do number four of the consent agenda?
You missed item four.
Oh, okay, let's do consent agenda. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Item four, Elaine, will you read that one? Thanks, Lisa.
Acceptance of the motion summary of the Finance Committee meeting held on February 11th, 2020, as recorded and transcribed.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Hoffman. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, now moving out to the presentation. Tonight is, our presentation is for the Delaware Health Department District, Commissioner Sheila Hiddleston. Now, I will tell you, I met Sheila years ago, coming to the meetings and giving us updates. And I didn't know a whole lot about what the Health Department did. I knew they did flu shots, they did car, car seat checks, they did newborn visits, and they talked to us whenever there was, um, things like, uh, ticks and stuff like that, they would come to council and give us updates. And I know they went to the Health Departments to give checks on, to make sure all restaurants are doing good. But after these last six weeks, I have a whole new respect for our Health Department. So I'd like to read you this proclamation. Whereas the city of Delaware has responsibilities to recognize occasions of outstanding significance. Whereas the Delaware General Health District employees, help our community to prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of large range of health threats. Whereas the Delaware General Health District celebrates their 100th year serving the residents of Delaware County with a constant, a constant mission to promote, protect, and improve the health of our community. And whereas the world has encountered a health coronavirus pandemic that affects every day, the life for all. Whereas the Health Department, Health Commissioner Sheila Hiddleston and her staff have been working timelessly to communicate information to the public officials and citizens on the facts of this pandemic and the best safety practices for our businesses and homes. Whereas Commissioner Hiddleston has demonstrated strength, leadership, and calmness in her, in her face of the adversity of the, and attended countless daily meetings to educate officials on the most up-to-date knowledge. Now therefore I, Carolyn K. Riggle, the mayor of the city of Delaware, do hereby recognize the extraordinary leadership of Health Commissioner Sheila, Sheila Hiddleston, and also recognize the Delaware County General Health District on its 100th anniversary. And I join with my fellow citizens in recognizing this notable milestone and thank Commissioner Hiddleston and all of the staff for their past and continued efforts to make our community a healthy and safe and happy place to live. If we were all at council, I know Sheila, we would all be standing, clapping, and congratulating you. So thank you. Sheila, did you have a few words?
Yes, thank you so much. That's very kind of you and we certainly do appreciate it. It's, it's nice to be recognized, but you all need to know, it's a team effort. We have about 75 to 80 staff and every single person is working tirelessly. Lots and lots of hours put in, trying to keep up with the latest and the greatest information. We laugh and say that if we think something's one way in the morning, by the afternoon, it's changed. And that's okay. Anytime you have a novel virus, that's what's going to happen. But we appreciate, you know, you recognizing us. But I also want to say that we could not do this without the partnerships of the city, the county, our entire community. We are so fortunate in Delaware County to have people who work together. You know, we all knew each other before. I think we have a new respect for everyone. I have more first responders' cell phone numbers in my phone than I ever would have thought I would have had. And I've already told them, they're not getting out of my phone once this is over with. I have to recognize Chief Pidgenowski and Chief Donahue. We have been through some really difficult things in the last few weeks and without their support and help, we would definitely not be able to get through. So while it may be our charge to protect the community's health, it has been a community effort and we really truly are appreciative of that. So thank you very much. Definitely, I will share your kind words with our staff tomorrow.
When time allows, I will drop this off to you, when we're allowed to go beyond the social distancing. Did you have any kind of an update that you wanted to give?
Sure, I'd be happy to and then answer any questions. So probably the best way for you all to keep track of what's going on is we do give you our newsletter every Monday and Friday. And sometimes in the middle of the week, if things change, so you should have all received one of those today. We appreciate also, I should have mentioned, we're very lucky in Delaware County that all of our public information officers work well together. So we appreciate that Leah's been, you know, sending our messages out and about and all that coordination. It's nice for our community to get one message that's consistent as opposed to, you know, getting a lot of different messages and then they can't figure out what's going on. So today we confirmed 121 cases with 31 probables. You may be aware from our newsletter, I think a week ago, that the CDC has now told us that we need to count those probables as well. So even though we call them confirmed improbables, as far as the work that goes around those, no difference whatsoever. Today, we have probably followed almost 600 people. Every single one of the cases, we have to do contact tracing with them and we're averaging between two and three contacts for every case. We have to follow up with all of those people. And then, once we put someone on isolation or quarantine, we do daily monitoring with them to check on them, make sure that they have what they need to stay where we've asked them to stay. We are responsible if we have to do, provide food, medication, lodging, I mean, all of those things become our responsibility once we put someone on isolation or quarantine. Now, we're asking our community to do that voluntarily and so far, with the exception of very few people, everyone is doing that. And again, we appreciate that so much. So that's kind of where we are. You all heard the governor speak today. I, for one, was hoping that hair salons were going to be open, but a lack and a laugh, I have to do with my roots for a little bit longer. So we are also following, just like all of you are, we laughingly say, you know, it sure would be nice to have a heads up about some of these things. And I do with my fellow health commissioners have calls with Dr. Acton periodically. We had one today at 11:00. And we've asked her, you know, could you just give us a heads up? Because a lot of times, 10 minutes after the press conference, people are calling us, asking us, what does it mean? And we're like, well, we just found out too. And she kind of laughed and said, she, she tries to give us as much heads up as she can, but sometimes she doesn't know what's going to be said. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are working with our teams to help all of our community partners. If they call us and say, okay, we're trying to prepare for opening, what do we need to think about? What do we need to consider? We were on a call today with, isn't that horrible? I just forgot who we were on the call with. I can't remember. Oh, the DACC. We were on a call with them because, you know, they've got all of those adult classes and what does that mean? So we spent about an hour and 15 minutes kind of talking through that. So we are happy to help our businesses, our other community partners, other social service agencies, really kind of think about that. So please don't ever hesitate to call. We do know that as things open, we're going to continue to get complaints. We've been getting a lot of complaints, either somebody from the public calling us and saying such and such shouldn't be open, or a person who works there calling us, not thinking their bosses are doing it right. So we are getting ready to launch on our website, a way that the public could actually just put those right in there and help us to keep track of them. Right now, it's a phone call and you're always welcome to call us. We've been working very closely with Chief Pidgenowski, as well as the rest of law enforcement in Delaware County, to kind of talk about what that looks like. So anything we can do to help you all, please don't hesitate to give us a shout. I think, like I said, I knew a lot of people's cell phone numbers, a lot of people know mine now too. So if there's any questions from council, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, Sheila. Any questions from anyone? Alrighty, I don't see any, so we'll move on. Item seven is consideration of ordinance number 20-26. Elaine, will you read this into the record for us, please?
Ordinance number 20-26. An ordinance approving a final development plan for Delaware General Health District for a new office building at 470 South Sandusky Street on approximately 9.4 acres on property zone POI Planned Office Institutional District.
Thank you. Mr. Eflin?
Madam Mayor, members of council. I think this case is very appropriate tonight, given the situation we're in and what we just discussed. Bear with me while I share my screen. Okay, how is that, is that looking like a slide? This is Delaware General Health District, everybody?
Perfect.
I'm getting ahead on. All right, this case is a final development plan for the Delaware General Health District. The site is located off of South Sandusky Street and is about nine and a half acre. It is Planned Office Institutional. It's surrounded by houses on most sides and the Country Club Retirement Home on the east side. Aerial photograph, we need to refer to it. You can see the existing previous Leroy Jenkins home that is proposed to remain until such time that the Health District might demolish that at a point in the future. Here's the proposed site plan. We've added a little bit of color to it, just by way of making explanations a little bit easier. But it is in keeping with the approved preliminary plan in terms of the access points off South Sandusky and an emergency-only access point off Magnolia. The locations of the parking lots and the building, the pond, remain the same. And here's the outline of the existing previous Leroy Jenkins home that will remain until they have funds available to demolish the structure, if that's what they decide to do. The structure they're proposing is 30,000 square feet. What you're not seeing on this diagram, but was included in your packet, is a potential 10,000 square foot addition located in this area. But for right now, I think they have their hands full with the 30,000 square foot package that's before you. Here, we've added in the details relative to the landscaping and the trees that you can see. Also, the brown dashed and dotted line represents a six-foot privacy fence. We had discussions about that in the preliminary. And indeed, we've moved, and the Health District has moved to add that in response to zoning code requirements, but also some of the comments that we heard during that time. And lastly, what I would add to you, well, I'll tell you about the fence, the fence they would request to do in two phases. We brought this up in the preliminary. Council seemed amenable to thinking about this as the final was up forward. But the, we've really concentrated with the Health District along the north and the west property lines. These are the locations closest to the parking lot and closest to the building in this case. And so phase one for the fence would be that it would be put in before the final occupancy permit is issued for the structure. Phase two for the fence would be the southern fence. And that would have to go in one year from the date of final occupancy for the structure. So in total, the, the whole fence will go in, but as council is aware, it is quite a lot of fencing. Additionally, in working with the Health District, you'll notice and listening to our community in the preliminary, this green line between the drive aisle and the fence, that represents approximately a little bit more than 400 feet of length. And you'll notice a condition that we've recommended in your ordinances tonight that would require planting of evergreen trees along that location. This is the location that is closest to the existing single-family homes. And that would add an additional layer of buffering when the trees would grow and mature. In addition to the fence, that'll block the headlights and the general noise up to the six feet from the beginning of the project. With that, I will show you the building elevations. Been refined just a bit from the preliminary, but you can see all the details in your packet. The building is actually about 14 feet to the eve. In this location, about 25 feet to the very peak of the roof, which you can see is pitched in various angles around the building. This is the west elevation, for those of you that can't see that. This is the east elevation, the south elevation, and the north elevation. We are suggesting that this of Delaware blue vein stone on the north elevation could be removed from the project. And that's because between the fence and the additional landscaping, essentially, the only people that will see that are those that are on the site. The front side, the front-facing part of the building does incorporate the Delaware blue vein limestone in accordance with the preliminary. We recommend approval at this time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave? Okay, I believe the applicant is online also. Do they have anything else they want to add?
Nothing to add, again, just here to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions at all for the applicant? Alrighty.
Carolyn, this is Tom. I was just going to ask Darren if he could just chime in regarding the process that we're following here for this case and the two, the two cases that follow.
Absolutely, Tom. Madam Mayor, members of council, you may recall when we passed our emergency ordinance, in order to promote social distancing, we delegated all the authority from the commissions to staff and council. In this case, what that means is this case has gone directly from staff, which is why you have the recommendation, to city council. You can do any of the three things, and there's probably more on the list. Vote to approve, you can vote to deny, you can amend it. Or the fourth option is if you say this is something we really want a planning commission to look at, you could remand it back to Planning Commission. We've done that with other cases in the past. So you retain all those abilities, but this case and the other two went directly from staff recommendation to council. So I just wanted to make that clear for everyone, and that's based on our prior emergency declaration.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions for Darren from anybody? All right. Any motions from council? Any questions?
I have just one comment. I noticed on the Facebook page, a member of the public is asking if there will be a tax increase in reference to this new building. I thought that was a question worth answering.
Sheila, are you still online?
Yeah, I might be happy to address that. So currently, the Health District have a, has a 7/10 mill levy. We cannot use levy dollars to pay for this building. Our plan is to not have to do anything new. However, I would share that this pandemic has certainly brought to light the number of dollars that it takes to run this type of a response. So while it is not our plan at this point, and again, and please let the public know, we will not be using levy dollars to build this building. I can't promise anything other than I would tell you that that is not our plan.
Thank you, Sheila.
Carol, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mr. Blaney, our board chair, vice president is on. I didn't know if he might want to add anything to that part of the conversation.
Sure, go ahead. Mr. Blaney?
He may be muted. Let me see if I can, let me find him to unmute him.
Am I on now?
Yes.
All right. Well, I'd just like to say this has been quite an effort we've been through in the last few years to get to this point. We appreciate all the considerations that our partners at the city have just to get to this point. We are looking forward to doing this project. It's not like we're not going to. But as Sheila said, you know, we have to, we have to take a look over the next month or two to see how our financial situation is going to come, particularly as it has to do with its contact tracing, because that's, that could be a huge impact on our financial situation. So we'll have more about that later.
Thank you.
I just would also add, Mayor, that our nursing and disease response team, which of course normally handles all of our communicable disease, we have about 75% of our staff right now that are working in that. And so that's where, you know, we come into this quandary that we have staff working there, and that is always supported 100% with levy dollars. And then because we're not doing some of the things that we normally would do, then those other sources of revenue are down. So, you know, if this really does go on for 12 months, definitely going to take some of those dollars away from other things. And so we may have to dip into our building fund, which again, has no levy dollars in it. But depending upon how this all goes, we're hopeful that that won't happen. We're hopeful we'll never have to ask the taxpayers for additional dollars. I would though also just let the council know that we are the least expensive levy in the entire county. Our levy is about $15 per 100,000 valuation, and we are the least expensive in the whole county, and we think we're a pretty good deal for that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. Okay, council, and what would you like to do on this ordinance?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance number 20-26.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller. I think a second by Mr. Jones. Is that correct?
Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman, sorry. There was no picture up. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for approval of ordinance 20-26.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Hoffman. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller? Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yeah.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Question carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheila. Good luck. Item eight on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number 20-27. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 20-27. An ordinance approving a final development plan for Delaware Development Plan LTD for a mixed-use commercial office building on lot 12724 within subarea six of Coughlin's Crossing on approximately 2.641 acres, located east of US 23, west of Coughlin Lane, and just north of Hawthorne Boulevard and zoned A1 PMU Agricultural with a planned mixed-use overlay district.
Dave, are you going to do these separately or together?
I'll do them separately, madam.
Okay, all right. So go ahead and number eight. Thank you, Elaine.
Yeah, I will share my screen. Madam Mayor, members of council, this is for Coughlin's Crossing in Sub Area Six. And I'm hopeful everyone can see the first slide titled Coughlin's Crossing Sub Area Six, Lot 12724. This is on 2.64 acres. It is in the Coughlin's Crossing subdivision. And planned development, it is just north of Hawthorne Boulevard. Coughlin's Crossing is zoned A1 with a planned mixed-use overlay, a specific text, and a preliminary plan that's been approved by council, and a preliminary plan that has been approved for this site and the building that we'll see. Again, just for refresher, we are in Sub Area Six. North is to the right this way. This is the site in question in Sub Area Six. For reference, this is the Blue Sky Car Wash location. Change direction on you again. North is up. US 23 is on the left. Coughlin Lane here is on the right. You can see Pennyway and Hawthorne Boulevard and the site in question. For the final development plan, again, the Blue Sky Car Wash is just to the north here. US 23 is on this side of the picture, and Hawthorne and Coughlin are on the east side of the development plan. This particular plan sheet has a lot of extraneous lines, which are contour lines. Basically, show the lay-in of the land, but I think it was the easiest to put some color on and to show you the general layout here. There'd be a shared driveway with the Blue Sky Car Wash that goes to a full-access cut off Coughlin Lane. There's also a right-in, right-out off of Coughlin Lane that then leads you into the roundabout in this location off of Hawthorne Boulevard. There is a proposed drive-through on the north side of this building with sufficient queuing lanes for many vehicles and many more than code requires in this location. There are two alternate plans. The desired plan is this one, which will include a patio then for this approximately 16,000 square foot mixed-use building. You can see the landscaping throughout the parking lot and around the perimeter in addition to continuing the landscaping along US 23 in a similar pattern throughout the whole development and including our limestone piers at intervals along the landscaping for this lot. The alternate site plan would replace the patio on the south side of the plan with another drive-through, a potential end cap use, allowing this building to have two drive-throughs, one on the north and one on the south side. It requires a little reconfiguration of the parking lot. The, having the alternates really allows the applicant to have some flexibility in marketing this property, and we think that it doesn't change from the high-quality design that you see in the packet here and that hopefully you see on the screen with the proposed elevations fitting the design requirements for really the interior and the base of this site being that sort of stone-end barn look and vertical and horizontal siding, in addition to some metal roof being introduced into this development. On the sides of the buildings will be finished out as well with dormers and pitch roofs. Here, you get a look at the north facade and what the drive-through window would look like. And here is the south in the patio configuration. If it were to be a drive-through, it would simply look like this in reverse. This is the front of the building towards US 23, and this is the quote-unquote "back" of the building towards Coughlin's Lane. But I think you can see that it's really four-sided architecture as required in this case. And finally, Archall has put together a perspective rendering of this building. The building is in keeping with the preliminary and the zoning text for this site. I think we'll set a handsome entrance to the City of Delaware along US 23 for this overall plan development. Staff recommends approval of this final development plan at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
That's really nice. Any questions for Dave?
I have something here. Hey, Dave. With regards to the shielding on the roof fixtures, you know, the AC and whatever they have up there on the roof, with these sites being down lower than the street level, you know, that fronting really is, you're still going to be able to see all those. Has that been taken into account? Is there a way to shield those more readily? Because we all know HVAC units are not very, very good-looking.
Yes, good question, councilman. And we could certainly let the applicant have a go at that answer, but between the large end caps on this building, that will certainly shield anything. It's really the portions in the middle that I think you're talking about. And we, you're right, the site does have a lot of grade, and these sites do sit down below the grade of US 23, but above the grade of Coughlin's Crossing and then the site to the east. And so we have not done a specific sightline study with rooftop units. I haven't gotten to that level of detail yet, but we could certainly ensure that as long as it's not, you know, grossly out of proportion, that these elements are pulled up high enough to screen those rooftop units. As you know, rooftop units come in a variety of ways. Some of them can be shorter, some of them can be taller. And they may end up deciding to do actually ground-mounted units in this case as well for the size of these buildings and the individual tenants. One thing I should note, this shows 10 tenants. It could be that, like with some other shopping centers, one tenant takes, say, the middle space, and therefore, one door gets removed, one door is the front door, and the signage would be consolidated to one side in the middle. Our comprehensive sign plan allows for that flexibility, and as staff, we would work that through as tenants come and go from these spaces. But if the applicant wants to address the rooftop unit screening question, now would be an appropriate time.
This is John Oney. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Yeah, apologize, I lost the video webcast in the middle of the first presentation, and I'm here on a speakerphone. So I think I'm hearing the questions, but if I'm not hearing them actively, click, shout at me or whatever. Yeah, we plan to screen the middle of the units or the middle of the building, the parapets, front and back. Are screened to the top of the highest rooftop unit. On the end caps, we do have the higher elements. From, as you approach from the north heading south, we probably can study that sightline. I think we're shielded with the high-end walls and mostly five-ton units. If we go to a 10-ton unit, we'll study that sightline and work with Dave to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the adequate screening of those units. I think as we approach further south, everything's fine. Just maybe we need to do a study on that north line. I don't want to get the middle parapets any higher. I think the proportions of those would start looking maybe not appropriate. So our intent would go to the height of the highest to be a 10-ton, which is what we docked.
Councilman, another way we can address that is there are screens that can be placed around the rooftop units themselves that would look similar to the metal shed roof here. So I think that could be a low-cost and easy solution as well without, you know, messing up this design that they're showing for this building. We can ensure that either one of those options makes it to the final construction drawing.
Dave, this is Randy Van Tilburg with Manik and Smith. We're part of the team with John there. I just wanted to give you a perspective. Our elevations relative to 23, the top of that parapet in the center is about five feet higher than what 23 is. So if you were, if you were on 23, that parapet's five foot above. If that makes sense. So just give you the relative, that's the worst case. The north end of 23, as you know, 23 is dropping across the frontage of the site.
Okay, I still think with final plans, council, we can make sure that the rooftop units are consistently screened, other developments that we've approved in this.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just want to say that I think it looks great.
I had one question. I don't, and I don't need any. Are there tenants lined up for this building and the next one on the list? Or are they building them?
Joe, I can't hardly hear you.
Is this better? Any better?
Yes.
Do we know if there are tenants lined up for these buildings? I don't need names or anything like that, but just, are they going to be full ton opening?
I can, I can address that. John Oney here, and Connie Creamer could not be here tonight. So, but they're in discussions with several tenants for that building. As far as finalizing those discussions, I'm not privy to where those are, but there has been a good interest in the building and the building itself and its location, which is why we're also pursuing, if we have immediate occupancy of that building, to be able to move forward with the, I think, the buildings that we're going to discuss next.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 20-27.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yeah.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
The approval of ordinance 20-27.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yeah.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Question carries. Thank you. We'll move on to item nine, which is consideration of ordinance number 20-28. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 20-28. An ordinance approving a final development plan for Delaware Development Plan LTD for two mixed-use commercial office buildings within Sub Area Five on Coughlin's Crossing on approximately 5.752 acres, located east of US 23, west of Coughlin Lane, and just south of Hawthorne Boulevard and zoned A1 PMU Agricultural with a planned mixed-use overlay district.
Thank you. Mr. Eflin?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, I will open my screen again here. Okay, hopefully you're all seeing the slide, Coughlin's Crossing Sub Area Five Final Development Plan. And this site is composed really of two sites that total about 5.7 acres. This site is south of Hawthorne Boulevard and south of the site that we, that you just approved. Again, the site is zoned A1 with a PMU overlay. We are now in Sub Area Five. Here's Hawthorne Crossing and US 23. North is to the right, and we're talking about these two buildings. This is from the approved preliminary plan. North is now up, again, to show you the two buildings in overview location with Hawthorne Boulevard and the new signal, the site we just approved and the car wash site. Changing directions on you one more time. Changing directions on you one more time. North is to the left of the screen. US 23 Hawthorne, the roundabout, Coughlin Lane. And the two buildings, each of which is approximately 19,000 square feet, each of which includes a drive-through on the north side of the buildings and a patio on the south side of the buildings. A parking field surrounding the buildings, a full access curb cut between the two, shared access between the two sites and also stubs for access to the remaining lot, which would be to the south, basically on the corner with Meeker Way and 23. And one full access curb cut then on the very south side of the site. There's also shown a right end off of Hawthorne Boulevard. Engineering is still reviewing all of this, as you know from your conditions, and will make final determinations based on engineering review, whether this AD is allowed. But conceptually, I think it could be. Without it, the site functions just fine and you can get into the site and circulate around to Coughlin's Lane and back through the roundabout and across the sites as Shenton. Again, you can see the perimeter landscaping around the site in the parking field. You also see the landscaping design being coordinated and pulled across this frontage of US 23, including stone piers and actually one of our stone monoliths similar to the one you've seen at Turkey Hill to the south of this location. So the proposed elevation here looks a lot like the one we just looked at because it is, although it would be slightly bigger than this one. But I wanted to show you in relief, I have it here in this presentation if we need to refer to it. And the best colored elevation that I have for these buildings, which include up to 12 tenants, is the comprehensive sign plan. Now, the signage will not have boxes around it like that. We simply require applicants to do that in these cases so that we know where signs can go and how big the space is within which a sign could go. So picture this without the sign boxes and you have the elevation of this building, which really is a mirror of the other building, although just a little bit larger. Again, tenant spaces could be potentially combined as time goes along here, where you might have one tenant for these two spaces. We would then combine signage and make an appropriate door or doors, depending on the layout of that particular tenant. This would be the US 23 frontage, the Coughlin's Lane frontage. And again, full foresighted architecture with the sides of the buildings as well. We do recommend approval at this time. It is in keeping with the preliminary plan and all the required zoning texts. We will ensure, like the last case, that the rooftop units are appropriately screened either through the parapet walls and sightline studies or through specific screening on those rooftops. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave from the council? Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Did the applicant want to add anything to Dave's presentation?
No, Dave, very good presentation and we're in agreement with all the conditions.
Perfect. Okay, what is the wish of council?
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings under ordinance 20-28.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 20-28.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck with this project. It's nice to know that things are still moving forward, even though it feels like the world has stopped right now.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate the staff, planning commission, the council. We've been at this for five years and some great things are happening with the Romanelli Hughes Developments, the 23 Developments to the north. And so we're excited about this finally taking off and thank you for all your help.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 10, which is the Finance Director's Report.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. Just a few updates. The monthly financial report was presented to the Finance Committee on April 15. Major highlights were income tax receipts were up by about 3.8%. Property tax collections were up by about 2%. And then for the enterprise funds, utility charges were up by about 1%. I will tell you, these numbers will not hold for the month of April due to the pandemic. We will be doing month-end close on Friday. So similar to April, I'll have some tentative revenue numbers for major revenue sources sent out Friday morning. There is an insert being included with the May utility bills that will be issued next month. It's going to outline the instructions and the program for the hardship application for utility customers and credits that could be applied. One other item of note. The county auditor contacted city administration over the last week, and this was in the Delaware Gazette today. They were working with the state of Ohio to extend real estate tax collection due dates from July 10 to April 20. Also, they're working to get manufactured home collection due date shifted from August 15 to September 15. So I just want to make a note of that for council as well.
Thank you. I did contact one of the commissioners to see if they could extend the property tax. And he said you're only allowed for one month until August, which is really surprising to me, but a little bit of help I help.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Any questions for Justin? So buckle up. Here we go, Justin, in the next few months.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Item 11 is City Manners Report and Update on COVID-19. Tom?
Yeah, just real quickly, because I know we have some updates to follow. We are finalizing our recovery plan. We were waiting really to hear from the governor today. That's provided some additional guidance to us. We've consulted with the Health Commissioner regarding kind of returning our operations. You know, we never closed. We've continued to maintain our operations. But obviously, there's a lot of new guidelines with respect to masking, temperature checks, contact with the public, telecommuting. So all of that will be included in a plan, which I'll share with council towards the end of the week. But it is informed by what you heard today by the Health Commissioner and input from directors. That's number one. Mayor, I'm glad you talked about the special events and that's obviously a lot of people asking questions about that. You alluded to a meeting we're having with the YMCA tomorrow. Councilman Hellinger and Councilwoman Keller will be part of that call. Their capacity as members of our Y advisory task force. Obviously, they're our partners in terms of recreation. So we've got to coordinate with them in terms of what lies ahead for this summer. So more information will be coming about that. And again, we're continuing to provide the necessary services under very difficult and unpredictable circumstances. And hopefully, over the course of the next few weeks, we'll get a little better clarity about some of the other businesses that weren't included in today's announcement by the governor. Because we know they're just as important as all of our other businesses.
Right, absolutely. And I think the guidelines that's on the governor's page is excellent. It's so funny, but if anybody needs to look at that, just pull it up and it spells it all out right there. Okay, Chief Donahue, do you want to give us an update on the fire department? And thank you for leading our task force.
Absolutely, and thank you and good evening, everyone. As Tom mentioned, we're really starting up and have been trying to focus on the recovery for several weeks right now. But our operations citywide has been going very well and it's a true tribute to the staff that we have working for us. One of the big things that we're waiting on currently is surgical masks. Our next, we have not run out. But in order to take on some of the additional responsibilities, such as yard waste and so forth, we want to get the additional surgical masks in place before we start that. So we are planning on another 20,000 surgical masks coming in this Friday and another 30,000 beyond that. And the reason why we're getting so many is because there are some delays in getting these. But also, we want to make sure that when we start these programs up, that we'll be able to sustain them. So these masks will be for city staff, fire and police to be utilized for their protection as well as for the patients and the people that the police department will be dealing with. On a separate note, from a fire department standpoint, as I identified previously, we had separated our fire EMS to ensure our continuity of our operations and trying to ensure or prevent a cross-contamination. On Friday, we relocated all of our units. So we're back to normal, back to our forestation configuration. I can't tell you that the stats that I ran earlier today indicated that since March 16, we did over 163 responses on patients that were either COVID, were on some type of quarantine waiting test or had some of the signs and symptoms of COVID. So we have not had any of our personnel contract that. And I greatly appreciate the work that they've been doing and the steps that have been taken by our personnel. So with that, I will address my time to Chief Pizanowski, unless there's any questions. Oh, I guess one other thing also. If there's any additional information you would like as part of the situation report, please let me know. I've been trying to modify it throughout this event just to make it as relevant as possible for everybody. But if there is information you need, please let me know. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Pizanowski?
Can't hear him.
Did we lose you?
I don't know if I'm muted, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Do you want to go with Sean and see if Suzie can figure it out?
Sean Hughes, Economic Development Director. Are you ready?
Can you see me, hear me?
I can hear you, can't see you.
All right, I just turned the camera on. So, Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. Thanks for having me this evening and for all your support over the course of the last several weeks. It's been very difficult and trying for our business community, but I think we're making it through for the most part right now. I'll start with the governor's press conference today. The news wasn't exactly what all of our businesses wanted to hear, unfortunately. But it does give us a little bit of guidance to start working, task force work here shortly. So however, May 4, you saw our industrial partners are to continue operating. They have been operating normally generally over the last several weeks since the beginning of the order. In fact, of our industrial companies, if you look at the survey results, only about 5% really did any layoffs. And in fact, a couple of them had actually tried to shut down, but they found out that their customers wanted them back open. So they reopened and pulled all their employees back. And then we have two that are directly related to the automotive industry. So one of those was operating that third capacity and the other one was, we believe, fully shut down. They're not really responding, so we think that means they're shut down. So right now, the one automotive supplier is coming back fully online, as we understand, in a conversation on Friday. So that helps out things with our industrial sector offices. As Tom had alluded to, office employees are being encouraged to start work again, not necessarily come back to work. I think the governor did say that he still would like to see telecommuting, remote work as much as possible to keep the spread down. So I will be working with our office companies to continue try to do that as the weeks come. May 12 is the beginning of retail and service-based companies. And if you notice a trend here, we're actually opening in reverse order of how we closed. So the last ones to close down during the stay-at-home orders were actually the retailers and service-based industry. So those are actually some of the first to reopen. So the retailers are going to have a lot of work to do. And fortunately, when we talk about the business recovery task force, we do have a couple retailers locally who have stayed open during the whole time because they were selling essential items. And they're used to, they know how to comply with the guidelines. And that's the second part of what came out in today's press conference is the five, and I won't call them guidelines because they're actually requirements now, including the face masks, the PPEs and the capacity of your space being at 50% occupancy. The intent here is obviously is to keep your employees and your patrons safe and to reduce spread. And in fact, that will go into a lot of the work that we'll be doing with the Business Recovery Task Force. I am so used to talking with my hands. This is really difficult. So let me get into the survey a little bit. And I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but if you have questions, please, please let me know. We had a really good representation of all of our industry sectors in the survey. And people are very forthcoming with how they were doing and what they did. We had about 85% of our businesses citywide stay open in some capacity. I'm not saying they were fully operational, just 85% were open. 15% closed up entirely, with a third of those doing it voluntarily and two thirds of them closing up due to the order. So one third of our total businesses had 75% to 100% of their staff working entirely on-site. And a third had 75% to 100% of their staff working completely remotely. So in the middle there are all the others who laid people off at a greater capacity or had more people working in another capacity. 36% of our businesses did not lay off any employees and 36% laid off half to all of their staff. So there's a pretty equal distribution there. But a lot of, we found out a quarter of our businesses were providing some sort of paid leave to their employees that they sent home, which was really very good. And one thing that we really found out in the survey, if you look at the top three business concerns for employees, is the businesses were really concerned about the welfare of their staff. The staff is what makes their business and often in most cases. And they want them to be healthy. They want them to come back when they reopen. So that's something else that we address in the Business Recovery Task Force. So a lot of businesses weren't set up to handle this whole idea of shipping and carryout and whatnot. So a lot of them had to quickly adjust to a new way of doing business. And you see that with the little graphic there, the truck. 41.2% could do some sort of ship, deliver, carry out their product services. And a lot of them, 17.6%, couldn't do either. So they really couldn't do business at all. The top five concerns of moving forward that we'll have to address with the Business Recovery Task Force is the financial impact on operations, access to capital liquidity, decreasing consumer confidence spending. That's a huge one, guys. The global recession, there's not much we can do about that globally, but that is a concern of theirs. Employee stress came up again there, shows you how concerned they were about their employees. And supply chain disruptions, that's a big one. That one even impacts our industrial. That one even impacts our industrial users. If they can't access the things that they need to do business, that puts a strain on their operations and they can't do business efficiently and they can't make money. So a majority of our businesses didn't have a lot of liquidity or a line of credit to fall back on, so they've been trying to fund their businesses in different ways. You saw less than half actually tried to access the EIDL loan, where over half tried to access the payroll protection plan. A lot has changed since the survey came out. In fact, today I found out just a couple more had actually been granted the PPP loan, which was good news. However, there's still a lot of people out there in limbo. Unfortunately, the funding came back online late last week for the, just the PPP loan. The EIDL loan was not put back into effect. It was not funded again. So it really, the PPP is only going to last with those folks that already had applications. And honestly, today was the first day of applications for it again, for those who did not already have an application in. But I, I really don't think that if you put an application in, that you're, you're going to access funding, quite honestly, it won't last that long. So again, the survey was a good instrument and to, to give us information going into the next phase of our reopening. We had been working with a, a national economic development group called Blaine Canada to, to develop the questions and this and whatnot, and I think we got some good information out of it. So the task force, I've been working with Tom and the mayor in regards to putting together a business recovery task force. That'll be a, a well-represented group of business owners and community partners from a variety of the industry sectors that you see in the survey itself, who will work on several things, one being worker safety. How can we help our businesses to comply with the requirements that were issued today? And just a side note, we are hopefully this week actually going to, we're working with the health district to have a Zoom conference to talk to our businesses about meeting those, those requirements, so we can give them some, some guidance ahead of time now, way in advance of, of even this task force working, because the, the thing they're having difficult, difficulties trying to access right now are the PPE, which is something that we've had difficulties in, in acquiring at the city too, right? So the businesses also have difficulties in that. The second thing that recovery task force will work on is patron safety. How, how do we follow those, those requirements? But patron safety actually leads into the other thing that, that the task force is going to have to work on, and that's consumer confidence. Actually, there was a, a survey that came out by an organization that does retail modeling and whatnot, market surveys called Resonate, and they found out that 65% of consumers said that even if businesses were to open today, they wouldn't step foot back into somebody's business or go eat and dine in in a restaurant. So that's a pretty powerful statement, a pretty, pretty powerful statistic, and something that we're going to have to try to work to overcome so that our businesses can be successful moving forward. And that goes into, again, patron safety and health and hygiene. This is, I'm sorry. Businesses, services and resources, that's another sector that will, the, the recovery task force will have to look at. Are there things beyond what we're doing now to help our businesses that we need to tap into, to help our businesses through this phase? And then marketing, communications and promotions, what types of things can we do as a community to help make sure that people know our businesses are still here, that they're safe, they're healthy places to go to do business, and how can, again, we make that, make sure that they have everything they, they need to be successful?
Great. Thank you so much for keeping in touch and, and moving forward. Make sure, make sure that Delaware is strong once again, as I know we will be. So thank you so much, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions from council for Sean? Okay. Thank you. Did we find Mr. Pidgenowski, Chief Pidgenowski?
Please tell me you can hear me.
I can hear you, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
All right. Sorry about that, Madam Mayor, members of council. Not, not a whole lot on the police department side. We are continuing our operations as we've already talked about. Happy to report that we have no personnel issues related to COVID-19. We continue to partner really well with our other agencies in Delaware County. We meet on a regular basis just to stay consistent and kind of work together. You know, in 32 years, I never thought I'd partner closely with the Delaware General Health District and the Delaware City Schools to address a public safety and public health issue, but here we are, and it's been going really well with strong partnerships in the county, and so far, so good. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all your extra work that you've been putting into, and thank your group. Thanks. Okay. Council comments. Mrs. Keller did have to sign off. Today is for Dad's birthday and they had a little surprise for him. So council comments, Mr. Jones, do you have anything?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Hoffman?
Nothing to add.
Great work, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
First, can people hear me now?
Yes.
Yay, I got a new microphone, so just in time to not say much. So I don't have very much. I just wanted to say I've really noticed all the amazing things that are happening in the community, people volunteering time to do all sorts of things to help out. I know there's also been a lot of bad things that have come along with this, protests, conspiracy theories. I think at this point, we all know somebody who's probably been impacted by this in some way as well, even in a county like ours where we haven't had many cases. And I just want to encourage people to look beyond the things we can't control and see where you can help out. And we have, like Sean was saying, we have lots of businesses that are going to be needing help. We have nonprofits that need help. There's, everywhere you turn, there's people who need help, and just I want to encourage people to look out for that and keep our community strong by helping any way you can.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Hellinger?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Schaefer?
Nothing, Chris.
All right. I don't have anything either. I just know I've had so many phone calls this week about what's going on and what am I going to open and what can you about this? There's too many people in this store, so I'm just so grateful for our team that all I have to do is pick up the phone and, and pass that on and it gets taken care of. If you haven't, if you haven't seen, I have been reading nighttime stories to your little ones, trying to help your parents out. So tonight I did a little bit early, and it was number 11, and I'm enjoying doing it, and that's my little way to give back. So with that, I will look for, oh, May meetings. So we're not going to have any meetings at all in May, possibly a civil service if we need to, and possibly HPC, but I haven't confirmed that. Other than that, May is, is good.
Mayor, is there going to be like a finance meeting in May and all, a committee meeting still on?
Yes, there will be one in May. It has not, I don't think a date's been set for that one, and it will just, because it's just you guys, I don't have to worry about the public coming to that one. So, but thank you, Chris.
And we have a council meeting scheduled for May 11, correct?
I thought she, I thought she just said no meetings in May.
Well, that's your extra meeting, okay? May, we're going to have one council meeting, just one, because the other one falls on Memorial Day.
You just said, you just said no meetings, so there are meetings then.
I'm thinking of all the other meetings, all the boards and commission meetings.
It's fine, I just want to make sure. All right, no big deal. All right, no problem.
We will have our first regular meeting in May.
No problem.
And we'll do it on virtual again this way.
Darren, what? Sorry to interrupt. You mentioned the planning commission. Under the current emergency order, it is possible that we will have the planning commission, not the planning commission, I'm sorry, the civil service commission approval list just come up to council instead of going to the civil service commission, but we would do that at your regular meeting, and we're still trying to figure that out, but that, that is a possible agenda item for council's regular meeting as opposed to that meeting on their own.
That was for civil service, Darren?
Yes, and I do apologize if I misspoke. That is, that is for civil service, Madam Mayor.
All right. And then we're just waiting to hear on the HBC one, if that's going to need to be made or not.
Chris, just for our June meeting, depending on the guidelines, we might try to meet back in the chambers, but we might have a limitation with respect to the public. So we've got to figure that out in terms of the social distancing and that type of thing, so.
But we, but we have a finance meeting in May, right?
Correct.
All right.
Councilman Jones? Yes. The finance committee meeting is set for May 13th.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Cool, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. All right. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned by Mr. Jones at 8:28. Thank you all very much and have a great evening.
See you, guys. Be safe.
Thank you.